Mr. Mayor, we have a special meeting in the town hall of order. I expect you to tell us.
Benson.
Liam.
Burgess.
Here.
Chavez. Hanks.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, can I ask you, is there a status on trustee Chavez? If there is a status, what is that status?
Mr. Mayor, we have a special meeting in the agenda. We want to check by the agenda, please.
Okay. Trustee, where the cap, where the cap, the last, this trustee had missed over eight meetings. And we've, on last Tuesday, during the village board meetings, we had on the agenda to call for that seat to be vacant. But now, all of a sudden, we hear that trustee Chavez is participating in the meeting.
How many times is he going to do that?
We, well, what's going to happen, even though he does it this time, we still want to seek to have that seat vacated.
Mr. Mayor, is that on the agenda? I know too.
Okay. Let's move on to number two.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Why is the police chief standing over here? Why is he standing? Why is he standing?
I have to understand, I have to understand, make sure that he can walk around and stand. He doesn't have to sit.
To do what? I mean, what's the reason? You want to...
I don't have a reason for it. The police chief are asking him to sit. And they, we want to make sure that everything is okay. He doesn't have to sit the way he just stands. He can stand anywhere.
I'm in, sir. I'm just asking you, why is he standing? You know, that there is a security reason, which why is he standing up here? That effectively, another national...
That man don't care if I'm ready.
Well, let me just say, what justification is there for him standing or sitting? Why are everybody else sitting? Do you want to come in and...
No. My question is, he's the police chief signing the name. What reason is it? Every other department here is sitting down. Why is he standing right next to the diocese? I mean, it's very, it's very threatening, but something we need to know about, that we, you know, something maybe going down or something. He never stands in the alley. I'm just wondering, why is he standing?
If that's something going down, the...
Well, I just wanted to know, why is he standing?
You can be afraid of the president. Chief, you can stand or you can sit. They have not put this in very close. Okay. So, let's get back to your head.
I want to know, I asked you a question before we started. And a trustee, if it's not on the agenda, then why didn't that trustee state, trustee Burgess, to do it? Not on the agenda either. So, I think that's contrary to his belief. If what I'm asking you, not on the agenda, and he wants to move forward, why didn't that same trustee make that same statement towards trustee Burgess? That we can move forward, but he did not. That's a problem for me, because we can move on. I understand why.
Thank you. We have a motion to restate both attorney, Olson and Stirk, they're both, if they all own the mayor, attempt to remove, uh, remove or not leave or any of the clients. Law. So. Comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, let me say this. The items on this agenda could have been addressed on any regular board day.
That's right.
Any regular board day. But for some reason, a special meeting was called, as always. And once again, costing the taxpayers money. I would like to go on record to say that, if this the case, I would not like to get paid for this meeting, because it is a necessary meeting. And the item, as I said, could be, could have been held tomorrow, or the next week, Tuesday, or any other two-day board meeting, except on a day that we don't have board meetings. To me, it's just another way of really trustees or the administration to, the, to, I'm gonna say snatch money from the pockets of the taxpayers. Uh, and this somehow has to stop. We could have had this meeting any day on our regular board meetings. They support the record, do not pay me for this meeting. You don't need to be here for this day. And it is an inappropriate meeting in my opinion. Thank you.
Right there. Let me just say, even though the board put the motion on the agenda for tonight, they do not have the authority to appoint a village attorney. That power lies within the mayor. By statute, by ordinance, the mayor have the right to appoint and approve the village attorney. On last Tuesday, Olson and Stirk were given a letter to resign. I ask them else to do tonight, to honor that. For the last over twenty-eight months, I have, I have had little or no communication at all with the Olson and Stirk law firm. That's a huge problem to me. And I have expressed those interests to Burgess, and I also express those concerns to Mike. So, when you have no communication or little communication, when I was elected, I was elected to run the village with the advice from the, from the attorney, legal advice from the attorney. Is, uh, Olson and Stirk have been giving me bad advice? That is one of the reasons, one, just one of the reasons, that I asked Olson and Stirk to go ahead and resign. I've already fired him. And I said, I'm gonna go ahead and walk away now. Because the advice that they had given me, it's not been good advice almost from day one. All right? I, I, I just want to just reflect a little bit. I can't, no, I can't do too much about the village manager position. But they had gave me bad advice on that position from day one. They asked me not to go to court to rule that the board was out of order on that order. They put it in writing, told the board that they did what they cannot win, and yet they turn around and write up ordinance to get rid of the village manager. I got a huge problem with that. Seeing as those mean, they just stabbed me in the back. So, that, asking them, right now, I got, I have no confidence at all in Olson and Stirk's law firm. That is why I'm asking them to, to move on in a peaceful way, let the party on a good, a good position. I'm retaining, getting ready to look at other law firms who is going to be to represent the village. I need someone that I can count on. I cannot count on Olson and Stirk to represent me and give me advice from now on.
Mr. Mayor, let me say one thing to us, continue. If you had given them a, a, a letter of termination last week, to terminate this law firm from employment with the village, why are they here now? And if they're here right now, after you asked them not to return you back, you have a police chief, and we're not here, remove him right now, off that seat, out of this, out of this village hall room. If you terminated them, remove them right now, because they not supposed to be here, if that's the case. Exactly, Mr. Mayor, when we was in court, I got kind of misinformation, when we were in court this past week, they brought four attorneys to court with them. Are we paying all four? I need to know. Because if we are paying four attorneys to do what one attorney could have done, why was Ford needed to be in court to charge the village a large sum of money for a service that you had already removed them from? If this is a joke, sir? Mr. Mayor, I, I would like for you to remove, if you terminated them last week, they should be removed from this board right now.
I have a question.
Question.
We have a motion aside. I, I think any guy who has any type of knowledge about how this will work and works, would know that if you didn't terminate somebody, you wouldn't have a chance to resign. You don't have the abilities. You can appoint, but you cannot terminate, which is why you couldn't get rid of them months ago in trial, which is why you couldn't get rid of them now, which is why that's the board's responsibility. We had to approve them, therefore appropriate for them, therefore we're the only ones that can get rid of them. If this is something that is going to be, continue to be discussed, put on the committee. Next week, Tuesday's committee meeting, do whatever type of research that you or trustee Benson need to do, so you can understand what, or enlighten us as to how this works. But the last time I checked, the board control or creation of determination is not...
No.
You are, you are absolutely right in saying that the mayor has the right to appoint, as you did. So, we're going to assert. Unfortunately, once you make an appointment and the board approves it, with the board can get rid of them. So, now we're here, we have a motion, we have a second. I ask that any other comments or concerns be discussed at the committee, where there's statutes and everything else available for that. We do not want to go back into form on this. Motion aside, take it over.
Mr. Mayor, you need to ask for comments. Now, you need to ask for comments, people have a right to give a comment. So, I don't know what this trustee, we've been here for so long, makes you know, but when you ask for comments after a motion, you have the right to hear those comments. Thank you.
Wait, you, you heard me say that earlier part of my, when I was talking, that I know the board do not have the authority to move forward with this. So, keeping us from arguing and going on, we would let someone else decide this year, whether or not Olson and Stirk will be village attorney, or someone else that I would be appointing. Okay? So, at this point, I, uh, any other comments?
Benson.
No.
Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers. Williams.
Yes.
Okay. Motion care, let the record also show that I will veto this motion. Okay. Let's move on to number three. Motion to amend the ordinance twelve thousand five hundred five, clarify the position of village managers remaining in full force and is pending until beginning of the year beginning of the first of October. When the current amendment ordinance is in effect, we eliminate the village manager's position of the president. Your motion.
So.
Second. Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just received this motion, we, we received the email, this agenda, uh, Saturday, I think it was, about this, this, uh, special meeting. And we received this, we just received the ordinance. And I don't know how we can vote to amend any ordinance, when we all just received this ordinance, and no one had time to, to, to review it. I have not been able to review it, why would you allow it, Mr. Mayor? Secondly, Mr. Mayor, do we know for a fact if this is trustee Chavez on the phone? Why would we allow, why would we allow someone to speak on the phone? We have no clue. He's supposed to be in Texas. If he's in Texas, Mr. Mayor, if you don't know who this actually is on his phone, how can we prove that he is who he said he is on the phone? I would not allow, I would not allow anything that he says, or this person says, if whoever is making this on the phone, to make any votes in this case.
Mr. Mayor, the same way that...
Uh, two things. Number one, a motion aside, let's all for vote. Number two, I don't have the exact date, and I know that I'm seeing words right out of your mouth, trustee Burgess, but just about six weeks ago, Elamender Turner sent a right here on the phone, and trustee Benson going yes, no, oh wait, I can't hear you, please repeat. Oh wait, I didn't know what I was voting for. That happened right here, just about six weeks ago. So, I think if we're already on the president's, so I think we need to move on. The motion, there's a second. Let's all for vote.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
That's a fact of what I was gonna say, because we did not know who that was on the LDM. We took that person at their word, like we're doing here tonight. I don't know why we have to play these games, but that's, that's a game. We took the person at his word when it was done, before it'd been done several times. Trustee Myers did, I'm saying, I'm sorry, trustee, um, Hanks did it, trustee Benson has done it. So, I don't understand now, how, all of a sudden, it becomes an issue. We didn't ask anyone for their maiden name, or their mother's maiden name, or things like that, or their blood type. We took them at their word, because that's what they're called, trustees. So, to, to say that that person may or may not be who he may or may not be, that's a big issue. We've done it before, the president says that we can continue to keep doing it.
Mr. Mayor, that is absolutely correct. They should have questioned me on that phone then, and they did not. They should have questioned whoever else have done it, and we did not. I'm questioning it right now, because this young man been gone for almost two months, maybe ten. It's not a fact, two months, for whole two months. I was only going for a month meeting, and they should have had a sense enough to question it then. The board did not, that's their fault, not mine. Uh, and I'm, and I'm questioning his, uh, his voice, to see that if that is not his voice, and we do not know that. So, I'm questioning it. What happened in affairs? The board didn't question, that's on them. This is why we in the state that we in right now, because the board does their homework completely, and, and they can do things out of spirit. So, right now, Mr. Mayor, I'm questioning it. It should be questioned, and it should not be allowed.
Mr. Mayor, then if that's the case, then why would we ask the person that's on the other end of that phone, how much money was left in parks and recreation to build?
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that...
You go, man. You got four million dollars, follow me, shit.
Mr. Mayor, I can tell anybody that. Anybody on the phone, and kept, have their relatives, tell somebody what to, what to say on the phone. So, that, that ain't about saying it. But I'm done with this, man.
Mr. Mayor, say it, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
I think you don't, Chavez, it's a crime. Go ahead, Mr. Trustee Chavez.
I told you, we can talk. Should be silent.
People come back, oh, this is scary.
I'm done with this, man.
Colonel Coro.
Benson.
No.
Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Chavez.
Williams.
Yes.
Okay. Motion care, let the record show that I will be voting for... Okay. Let's move to number four.
Mr. Board at all the day to day operation and the Department here were to report directly to the man. Oh, sir.
Um, I think that answers his last question. I'm thinking that that's what we're discussing inside this session as far as what you want from here. But my first question for you is going out and hiring outside firms, are you going to be bringing firms to the board along with quotes? What their plan is to do, what their plan is to do, whether you were, how they're gonna investigate this or just to talk to bid? How was, how was your process gonna be to pick an outside firm?
Well, if you would get that information soon and decide whether or not you're gonna.
Oh, I just, I just wanna remind everybody sitting up here that the village board, which is in part of the trustees, do appropriate funds. So before we were gonna pay anybody to do this, the village board would have to approve it. I know that some people up here have connections with outside investigation firms. So I'm, I'm just saying that let's just be smart because the village board has to approve it. And any documents that are used in this building, we already seen our witness boxes we left Friday. So any type of boxes or any type of information that are used in this building has to be approved by the board. So that's why I'm asking, if you're planning on presenting this to the board next Tuesday at committee meeting or how this is gonna work? So I don't think we need to answer right now, I'm just putting it out there, but we're gonna have to know about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Are you done? That's good.
Um, I know you said that you were going to hire someone to do independent investigation out on our backs. That's like an oxymoron, you're the one along with this term that sued the board over this determination. So I'm asking, can we get an outside, outside like Tom Dart's office or Attorney General's or someone else's office that can take care of that with no cost to the village? They can come in, they're very independent, they have nothing to lose, it's not political when it comes to them. And if they're to come in and seize all records pertaining to this, and you don't have to go out and get anyone, we can, we can get that agency to come out here and take care of it. Because I do have a problem with you going out to secure an agency to come in and against something that you were against up, against in the first place. So allow you to go out and choose a supposedly independent person, I can't see how it's independent when you have a vested interest in it. So that's what I'm asking, can we get, I'm asking you for a suggestion now before we go any further. Can we get the Attorney General's or Tom Dart's office, which is the Cook County Sheriff's Office? They have people on, on their staff that can come out and do that here for the, for this village, for this, Mr. Powell. Mr. Mayor.
You will have my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, because it's my asking, sir, if, if it isn't somebody that's really not independent, I guess we're gonna be right back when we start over again.
That's up to the board, trustee.
Mr. Mayor, this board trustee will turn nothing over to you, short of the state attorney or the attorney general. That's why I'm gonna have attorney over to you because we know that, Mr. Mayor, you may not keep your word. We saw it in court, you're, you're part of lawsuits against this village, against this board, uh, trying to keep this term. Uh, and you want the evidence, everything, anything in behalf of information for investigation, we turn it over to you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what you're thinking, but, um, nothing will be turned over to you, nothing at all.
I don't think I request anything to be turned over to me.
Nothing will be turned over to you or to anyone that you have pointed to this, unless, short of the state's attorney or the attorney general.
You will get my recommendation. You will get my recommendation. Okay, any other questions? About the call, Rose?
Jackson.
No.
Burgess.
Yes.
Thomas. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Okay, motion carries, that the most, uh, that the record also showed that I will be treated over the most. Okay, that's goes to number five, approval to account payable and disbursement for August twenty eighth, two thousand and twelve, to company's level. Your motion?
Follow.
Your second. Uh, Cummins?
Question.
Question.
Page one, House Payable. Uh, set some requests, immediate check for Baxter and Woodman. Who authorized that check to be paid? I never s- I just, we didn't see an invoice on that, and I understand that it paid already, and what was it for? First page, the, the cover page. Baxter and Woodman, forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars fifty-three cents. Where did, where, where, where did that come from? Uh, who, I understand that check has been paid already. This board, at least, I, I won't say this board, I did not vote on that, and I didn't even see an invoice on that. I just found out about it today. And I understand it was paid back, I guess, at some point. I only missed one board meeting on the last week.
That's why I agree with you, counsel.
Uh, that was, that, uh, you might have submitted to the mayor's trustee, the office trustee, the charity consulting service, what was on the audit? It was submitted like that to the, the village manager authorized me, and the mayor also. And the mayor signed the check.
You said the mayor and the village manager authorized to disperse the check? Okay, because the, okay, I'll say it again, I didn't get a chance to vote on that, so I'm talking about the rest of the board. But I don't understand how we can pay that amount of money without going for the board and sending an invoice. So I'm asking the mayor, since you said the mayor is the one that authorized that, Mr. Mayor, what was, why?
Was it on the account payable before?
No. First time I've seen it.
Governor Anche. Look, it's the problem.
So why was the check even issued without the approval of the board? Especially, this is not petty cash, this is forty thousand dollars. Why did that check even issue, I mean, I can see it being brought up, but why wasn't it even issued without the approval of the board? I don't, I keep saying the board, I'm sorry, I'm one board member, I don't know about the rest of the board. I know I didn't see this check come before me and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to vote on it.
See, the, 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 the check was, this was for the, uh, Baxter and Woodman to make sure that we were informed with the, and pay the ask for it. But it's up, this was already on the, the account payable, that I believe, we believe that that was only account payable.
It was not on the, the, and there, the village manager, she asked me that why did we, we order it by any particular? And she said, the mayor had authorized, and she signed off and that you must have had the check, uh, to be there to be approved.
When I saw this today, Mr. Mayor, I came up to village board, I saw this today, I asked for a copy of the, uh, invoice. I just got the copy this morning, because there's a lot of things on this invoice that I do have questions with. I mean, I see we have five different engineers that work on this project, okay? And then we also have the oldest government consultant that charged us eighty thousand dollars, I'd like to know what was that for? And, uh, as I said before, this is the first time I saw the invoice, it was today. And I understand the check was paid for, I still haven't got the answer, why was this check issued and distributed without the vote of the board? Mr. Mayor.
You have a copy, you share?
I have a copy of the invoice, not the check.
Just copy this one.
I just got it this morning, because I didn't know anything about it, because I saw it on the account payable, and I asked, and I got this from the office. And I thought it was for the electoral, but it wasn't.
We, we have to look into.
We, Mr. Mayor, it's not, Pat, it was looking, the, the money's been paid, the, the check has been written, I don't know if it's been cash, but it's been written and distributed. I just wanna know why it wasn't distributed without, without the vote of the board. I mean, this is what the board does, because when that money comes up, now we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars of, of, of money that was, that just was not budgeted for. Why we had to pay it all at one time, I don't know, we've held money before for lesser than reasons. To pay this, I'm looking at, this, this invoice ain't even a month old. That invoice ain't even a month old, and we're paying it in total. We, we, we've held off attorneys and other vendors that, that deal with us over years and years and years, and we've held them off for months and months. This invoice is not even a month old, it was paid, number one, in full, and number two, without the consent of the board. And I'm just asking, you know, this is some of the things that we're talking about, I, I really like to know, you said that you have to look into it, it, it doesn't mean, doesn't need to be looked into, sir. It's already been distributed, I just wanna know why was this done without the consent of the board, sir?
Well, when, when I favor Rep. Wilton, when he asked me about paying, uh, so to find understanding that it was already, one of the items that was on the agenda had already been approved.
No, I asked him today, and he told me that check is already, uh, written, signed, and distributed. And that's what he told me today, because I didn't know anything about it until I saw it, that's why I asked him this morning.
Mr. Mayor. I need for the writer, we need to make sure this is documented, another example of the mayor and village manager spending funds. Uh, and this is a funds of forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars fifty-three cents without the board's approval. It doesn't take much to email up, I know that, uh, this, last week, the village board was requested to, uh, they polled the village board to see if we could at least pay our insurance, uh, because we were going to be canceled. To, again, to direct, were you directed to sign that check? Okay, so now we have, you moved directly to the mayor and village manager. Okay, so the village manager directs one of our employees to sign the check, uh, that was not approved, that was not provided for this village board. Uh, this is what we're not polled or asked if, uh, if we would approve this. Uh, I think that, yeah, for the writer, this is another example of how many is being spent without this village board's approval.
Uh, we have motion in, you, you have.
There, I, I, I was just, okay, Mr. Mayor, I understand that, you know, that you were, I'm not gonna be like an official. My job is to make sure that the money's accounted, because when it's not, it comes to us. It don't go to you, it's not gonna come to the mayor, they're not gonna answer, they're gonna say, why did you guys appropriate this money because you're in charge of the money? I still wanted an answer, I would like to get an answer, why it was not brought before this board, why was this board circumvented and not told that this was being done? And also, that's the first thing I asked, second thing, why, you know, we could get half or whatever, because this, this invoice is less, again, less than a month old. And we held more invoices for less money, longer period of time. So you saying that you have no answer why you directed this check to me, to me, uh, written?
No, my, my answer is the same thing I said earlier today, that we, when I was, uh, brought to my attention about, uh, paying Baxter and Woodman, we felt it was already on the account payable and had already been approved.
Uh, you, uh, did you ask, did you ask someone, did, did you, I'm serious, Mr. Mayor, did you ask somebody and say, was this, was this person telling you that this was approved by the board?
No, we were not asked, and no one said.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. This is the first question, and we know that there's gonna be an investigation on outside, uh, agency or someone, I don't know, decided to give us, uh, that name. Uh, I think it should be, it should be on the bill, because it says not to approve, and, and I understand, it's been paid, I understand it. However, there's been an investigation from the, and I only understand investigation with the board's approval. I think this is an investigation, is true, we say this is not approved. And again, this is another example of the mayor and the village manager spending funds without the board's approval. I'm asking for the forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars fifty-three cents to be approved from accounts payable, and so after all investigation, I can take.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a, go ahead. House payable. Um, lighthouse printing. That's on page five, EPA flag. Does one tell me, for that amount of money, how many, how many flags are printed? And also, does this include postage? Because it's a lot of money, we could, if you could set out two, um, salt talks for that amount of money, I'm probably bored into it. And salt talk covers the whole building, so I'm just wondering, was this including postage? And, uh, how many flags are printed for twenty-four hundred dollars?
There were about seven thousand copies approved, and one issue, seven thousand, at the unit cost of thirty-four point three four six four percent, comes up to two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, so it was, was it seven thousand of the same copy?
One same copy.
We only have thirty-five hundred more. Who approved that? Who approved it?
Uh, the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, here we are at the terminal, it's not here, this is the end, these allegations. So why are we, uh, whatever, I don't know, like that, or did the taxpayer's application, allegation, to be here to answer these questions? And she's not here, not by that kind of disturbing. But if we're, uh, don't be like that, my question, uh, I will state this. Two weeks ago, when you were there, stated that, but it's not just that, that Baxter and Woodman will be working on our hair scissors. The board actually elected them to do so, they voted for them. But now they don't want to pay them, they think it's gonna do it for free? I need, I need to know that, because they're the one that brought Baxter and Woodman, the owner of the village manager, to work on the hair scissors. Now that they need to, now that they paid them, I see the board has a problem with that. Let me move on. Page one, uh, item number, vendor number, like seventy-one. The invoice number six zero one one two. That's, uh, automated, automated bank of Chicago, two thousand and seven A bond. The A bond represents this village hall. This is the same bond that they want to approve for the village hall, for the taxpayers to pay. They want the taxpayers to pay for a bond that they had to go out and sell, because he did not have the, they did not have the money to pay for this building, which was told by us, by our consultants, that the taxpayers would not have to pay for this building, for this, uh, building. But now, since those, uh, uh, since those statements was false, and they saw that there was no development coming in from impact fees to pay for this village hall, now they asking the taxpayers to pay for it. The taxpayers should not have to pay for it, I think this should come from the person who gave this information, and they should go out and pay for it. Or find some money to pay for it. These same board members approved that, and now, when they don't have the money to pay for it, now they wanna put it on the backs of the taxpayers, just so the taxpayers will know. Page number five, Mr. Mayor. At the bottom. The same amendment number seventy-one, automated bank of Chicago, two thousand and seven C bond. This is the same bond that the village sold to pay for a fire truck, that the government gave us the money for, and the money came up this, mm, mm. So now they wanna put it on the accounts payable, to make the taxpayers pay for a bond that they sold to a fire truck that the, that the government gave us an earmarked grant for to pay. Where is the money at? We, this should be removed along with the bond A for further investigation. Now, if they, if they so, so wanna remove the Woodman and Baxter payment, we need to remove these bond payments to find out why and what happened to the money that these trustees has disappropriated since we had a fire truck. I voted no, and, and, and confirmed, because we voted for this before, and I voted no for the same reason. Where is the money for the fire truck, and what happened to the money for the, this building? Somebody needs to answer for, and since these, uh, these one, two, three, number one, two, three trustees, trustee Williams, trustee Anson, trustee Burges was up here before, during that time, they need to be questioned and held accountable. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I agree with you, trustee, you made, my man, I've echoed that for every sentence we found out that the trustees, uh, put this on the back of the, the citizen, knowing who were well that the bond that they took out, uh, was at a higher rate than at the time that the, the, the building was built. They signed off on these bonds, uh, not only did they sign off on the bond at that time with a higher rate, but they have clause in there where you cannot refinance those. So I agree with you, I think we've been calling for, for, uh, some answers on that, and along with the fire trucks. We've had two fire trucks, uh, one we, we, the system is going to have to pay, the other one, we're gonna have to pay the bond back, but we don't know what money it was for the fire truck. I agree with you, with you, we should, somebody should be held, uh, accountable for, for those, uh, uh, two items that's on this, uh, on the account payable.
Question?
Question.
Three things, number one, let's say again, we have a motion in second, the follow-up. Number two, since we have that motion in second, there have been four items that we've questioned. So the people, if you're going to take the words off, we need to remove that motion in second, amend them, and then repeat them as a motion in second with the changes that were made. And thirdly, I would just like to say, everybody hold on, I agree with you, we need to figure out what happened with the money, which is why we're pushing for audit. You fit in these seats for three years, there's no audit, you have no idea what happened to the money. That's why this board, the three trustees, that trustee, trustee doesn't have to, simply put out there, Williams, Hanks, and Burgess, I'm gonna throw Myers in there too, because hey, it's a good day. Probably for an audit. As a trustee, and as a voting member of the village, I've never heard of an administrative voting here, without an audit. We flip flopped through the meeting, oh no, we don't need twelve years, let's go eighteen. When this board, thank you, I'm sorry, then this board went back and we said, okay, let's go for six, oh no, we wanna go for eighteen again, we need to get, we need our next question. It's weird to me how we keep trying to stamp up, we don't wanna do a budget, we don't wanna do, we don't wanna get that done, we don't wanna do an audit, let's get the audit done. Let's see how one plus one equals two, let's see where two came out of, let's push this audit, that's why we need a six-month audit. So we need to do a thorough investigation, where is this money at, and then we'll be on track, and then all the questions will be answered. So again, there were four things, bond A, bond C, Baxter and Woodman, and I'm not sure what the result was for the lighthouse. If they step out to make a copy, and I did wanna point out that Heather Turner is the person that was billed to and shipped to, so again, I stepped out to make a copy to the board, is that the fourth item? That was supposed to be removed? Okay, okay, now village clerk, can you please remind us who made that motion in second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
I'm not that close, who made the motion in second?
The constable.
Yes.
That was, uh, the, the trustee mayor.
Okay, I vote, I vote trustee mayor second?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, because that was shake, we have four items we're gonna remove. I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and the trustee mayor, if you can, can you withdraw the second?
Yes.
Okay, then I make a motion to pay the account payable with the aforementioned items to be removed. Bond payments of A and C, the Baxter and Woodman forty thousand and some cents payment, as well as the payment for the lighthouse. Okay, the motion is second, if we can now call the board head to head.
You made the motion, Rose?
The mayor can't even, the mayor can't even. I, I know, it's always a real reason.
Use your mic. Board, removing the amalgamated bank payments?
I have a question.
If, part of the motion that I just made, we're removing the amalgamated bank payments, the lighthouse, let me finish, because I know what that's gonna do. The lighthouse payment and Baxter and Woodman. Once that motion, I was gonna wait till this second and vote it out, and then I was gonna direct you, if there is anything that is time sensitive, and you would like to send us an email to get a consensus from the board, to see if things should get paid, you might wanna do that tomorrow morning. Something like the amalgamated bank payment that we all know is time sensitive, send us an email, we can reply individually to the board, majority of the board thinks it should get paid, and it'll get paid.
We have, uh, according to this, uh, board's citizens' first. Let me, let me just say the first. The trustee Williams said that she agrees, and she also wants to do an investigation. If that's the case, why was this allowed to be put on the accounts payable? They couldn't, they could have called for an investigation without us on account payable, they tried to, they could have too, what we tried to do. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, they want, they wanna do an audit, because the same audit firm that's been here for the last twenty years is gonna do the audit firm. And that's a huge problem for me, I asked for them, I voted against this firm being here, and they still here. But yet, this, both, this, both the trustees, these three trustees, these four trustees, including Myers, want them to stay here, and I wonder why? He want, they want them to stay here, of course, they will look to do an audit, why they can come in here and make changes to the books, to cover what they did or what they hid? Maybe so, I don't know, but whoever comes in and investigates should not be that audit firm, it should be one of your selection, Mr. Mayor, so we can get straight and direct and true answers, so that we will not allow them to cover the mess that they put on the taxpayers.
Yeah, let me get comments on that. The, the audit firm that has, uh, has still is not providing, uh, this firm has represented this building for a long team year. And when I was elected, I, uh, tried to bring in another, uh, outside firm who has no ties to the building because of the same kind of problem that we are having now with our books and with our, and it's taken us, as trustee Williams says, just this long to get our, uh, an audit from the firm that they recommended, and they kept all the time. If we have had someone else, an, an outside firm when it first started, we probably would have had our audit already done by now. But these are the same firms that have been representing the village and been okayed by these same trustees that sit up here now, that have been doing it, allowing this to happen, but yet instead, we don't have an audit right now, because this is the same firm that these trustees might have been having from the.
The lighthouse did the floor.
What floor? The mayor, the mayor had the floor.
I haven't given it up yet.
The mayor had the floor.
He's fighting, he's fighting the most, Mr. Mayor, also, I'm looking at, uh.
What was it in the first?
I didn't get the thing for to be here right now, I, I need to know that, because what I'm looking at right now is on page one of bill for persons' first that had been, for invoice dated April the eleventh, two thousand and twelve, for forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. I'm also looking at a legal service rendered to another bill with the same forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents dated March, two thousand and twelve. Another one dated twenty, I mean, another one in the amount of. Another one dated twenty, I mean, another one in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents dated June, two thousand and twelve. Another one dated forty-seven thousand eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents dated July. Another one dated forty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand seventy-five cents dated August. That's over a hundred and, much, much more, a hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents. And this mayor, if you can remove them from the village, they should be gone right now. They still owe the biggest money right now. And a hundred and sixty-three dollars, thousand dollars for suing the village and they work for us? That's all the money comes from. Most of this money is, I can almost guarantee, is for suing the village. It's a conflict of interest to going to court to work to represent you, the village, sue her here, the village and work for these trustees, the village. I'm confused. We have problems here. I'm confused for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents of people worked against this village and they represent suing the village, that's all they do. This is the same gentleman that's sitting right here next to me. When I asked him, was he here to take the make it forward? He said, yes, we got it.
Whoa!
Are you true, person?
Let me just say on this deal also too, that is one of the reasons that I terminated service. We just cannot afford it. If we, if we, if we, if we cannot afford ninety thousand dollars, then that cannot afford a four million. So that is one of the reasons that Olson Sturz offered. That, that is one of the reasons.
Hey, I'm director village clerk, so I'm sure you're looking for a guidance. Can we look at getting copies of the documentation of where Olson Sturz sued the village? Because I need a copy that I lost. So, and I'm just asking, maybe it caught my eye. We mentioned a couple different times, not being a trustee, but mentioned a couple of times where Olson Sturz sued the village. I would like to get a copy of those losses, should they exist? And, uh, secondly, uh, first sir, proud, I would like to know if you could find invoices for Delgado law firm as well as the Studding law firm. I'm sorry, I'm not sure why anybody else is talking, but I'd like to know how much money was spent with those two law firms. Because these, these two, as well as Olson Sturz, were all law firms that were brought to this village by Mayor Lucas Towers. And every time we've had agreements because of official misconduct, abuse of power, and other things, we've had to use legal services. Every time we've had a question about if the village clerk can talk, or how do we read Robert's rules of order? Or we can't conduct a meeting without an attorney because it's only been three years and we don't know who can make a motion, who can second. So we've utilized legal firms just indispensable. So I'm not real sure why we're talking about that. Regardless, I'd like to know if you can just give, I don't know, the board requires those, but I'd like you to I'd like you to provide the board copies of those invoices. Because I'd like to tally up how much we spent on those services.
Got a motion?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, first of all, let me state why did, why the, uh, why it took so long for the audit to be taken care of? We've all, we've been over this, we've been through this. We, we found out why. Because states were prepared for three years prior to that. And that had to be done by another firm, which is still able to take care of that to make sure that everything was in place for the audit. I've asked every time why it was taking so long with this audit firm. And we've been going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I don't even know now if it's done, but the reason, you know, to, to sit up and talk about a law firm, especially while they're standing here, I think is really unprofessional. That's, that's, that's really, that's really something to do that, but you chose to do that. You chose to talk about a person who's running a place fine. But I'd still like to know, under what pretense, under what ruling did you have that you stated? Did you give them or tell this board why you didn't want them? Because when you first came into office, you got rid of Baxter, I mean, Wildland Herald. Okay, fine. The board at that time voted, the majority of the board at that time voted for the law firm that you brought in. A year and a half, that law firm resigned, we don't know why. We were never told why, but you, 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 uh, accepted their resignation. And you got another law firm. They came in. Then they resigned. Then you went out, every law firm you went out and got, we didn't challenge. We didn't challenge the law firm that you went out and got as far as saying, okay, well, you know, you got rid of Baxter, I mean, uh, Wildland Herald, okay. You got rid of Olson Sturz, we didn't challenge that. You got rid of Studding, we didn't challenge that. Now you're trying to get rid of, uh, Olson Sturz. That's four law firms in three years. Seems to me you said that they're not doing, it seems like they're not doing what you want them to do. But I thought that they worked for the village, not for the mayor. And if, if that's the case, I need to know the difference because I thought it was, they're being paid by the citizens of South Village, not by you. So therefore they don't do what you exclusively tell them, then you have no use for them. But that's what it seems like to me, I don't know. Because I've yet to understand why, why Studding left and, 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 and what was the reason for that? But you said, you know, they, they, they attended their resignation. I never asked for their resignation, Studding. I never asked for the resignation. Or you, you, pardon? Now, first of all, Mr. Mayor. See, I tried my best to be professional. I tried my best to be professional.
The record would show that the board of trustees forced everyone to go to law firm now.
No, we did not. No, we did not. Delgado was, was, was brought out by yourself to bring in Studding. We did not. And I will bring in Delgado next week if that's the case, to let them tell you that you, we did not have anything to do with it. That you asked them for their resignation. You asked them for their resignation to Delgado law firm. Yes, you did. We didn't ask that. We didn't even ask you. Next day, we knew Studding was there and you asked them to have a, a transition period smoothly. And, and, and obviously it wasn't that smoothly because they didn't get all the records that they required. But we never asked for, uh, Delgado law firm's resignation, you did. But to sit up here and say liar, okay, I, I try, I am, I'm, I'm going to refrain, I'm not going to say that. You can say what you want. But I do know the records are there. The, uh, village clerk has the record of the executive session when all this took place. It was back then, executive session, when you, when you told us that you are asking for their resignation. But now you're saying that we, I'm a liar. Okay, fine, we'll let the record prove. Madam clerk, would you please, at the next meeting, give me a copy of that particular, read, uh, that particular minutes that were stated why Olson Sturz, and, and, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Delgado law firm was terminated at whose behest?
Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification. Uh, Mr. Mohan, the auditors that we currently have right now, are they the auditors that were recommended by the mayor and the village manager? Okay, thank you very much. Just one point of clarification, because it is being said that the trustees appointed these, uh, auditors. But I do recall that these were recommended by the mayor and the village manager. Thank you very much.
Got a, got a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I also like one of the clarification. I'd like to know, if I want to also remove the forty-seven thousand dollars.
You the motion?
See the motion to amend the, uh, original motion that you discussed.
Well, I, I'm the one that made the motion and made the amendment motion. And I think that any trustee has a right to remove any item. So I have a problem with removing my motion and amending it. I just urge that, as when I make my mention, I will mention all the things that were involved in the removal. I would encourage the finance bureau to send an email out to the board, asking which items as a consensus would need to be paid. There's going to be time sensitive items. But I will remove my motion. And then you can, uh, Well,
We can amend the motion.
I have, I removed it, I'm waiting for trustee Meyer's. If you saw it applies to remove in second, and then I will make an amended motion on the front of the matter.
Mr. Mayor, well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the village clerk to please read the items that we are removing from the accounts pair. And Mr. Mohan, please give me the total new amount that we're going for, please. With all the items being removed, if you want to give us a list of the items being removed. And then you can give us a total free account pair, please.
Go ahead, you, uh, rescind the motion and you, you, uh, you, uh,
I will, I will proceed to rescind my second. If I can have all the items that have been removed on this topic here.
Not quite when you miss the item that the trustee has asked you to remove.
The last motion that was just rescinded by trustee Williams and trustee Meyer was the bond two thousand and seven, a serious payment for three thousand dollars. Bond two thousand and seven, serious payment for three thousand dollars. A payment to Baxter and Woodman in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And also an investigation was the payment for lighthouse printing in the amount of two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. I have not received the motion yet to exclude Olson Sturz. And the motion that I just heard rescinded was the motion to remove four items. And so we need another motion, Mr. Mayor, I just remove Olson Sturz for seven thousand dollars in account pair.
Got a motion in the second?
Yeah, we sent it in second.
Mohan, yeah, okay. And that's what you asked and took for us to approve tonight?
How much is that again?
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's what the four items that I just read? Four items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for here, Olson Sturz versus Daniel, we don't have a court right now. Of course, if you have the, if you have the alternative, they are sweet. If we could, if you want us to clarify, but right now, to be very clear on this fact.
Mr. Mayor, finish the discussion, we need all the side of the floor.
I would like to hear Olson Sturz for me.
Does he have any other motion?
He should have all now. The motion that's been added and to this, the part.
The, the, the motion that we have, the, the discussion, the motion, I got it. It's the trustee, every motion.
There's a motion already on the floor, I'm just adding that.
There is no motion.
We have four items to remove and that's the motion, I want this added on that motion. I don't need to be a motion, I need to be a motion to medicate.
It could be added just like the rest of the.
And if you had the trustee here.
For clarification, trustee Meyer, have you rescinded your second?
I have not, so I don't know what I'm.
Before we get, uh, an amended motion, please?
The four items that the village, uh, finance bureau to give, I will rescind my motion on that.
In the motion to accept the account pair with item removed, motion of, making a motion.
I'll make a motion to remove, get this right, lighthouse printing in the amount of two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. The bond payments of A and C in the amount of three thousand dollars apiece. The, um, payment to Baxter and Woodman for forty thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And I will make the motion to remove the items for Olson Sturz. I, the item that, um, trustee Benson spoke about. What was that amount, trustee Benson, should you can add to the chart?
Forty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents.
That. Again, I hope you did write all those down. I would expect to see an email regarding those property.
So your figure still stands, sir?
It's forty thousand.
You, right, so you, you tagged out the last one, right? Okay. Do you have a slip sticker? May I have it, please?
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars even.
That's not correct.
We still have to add the forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven thousand more, she just added in second.
Forty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six.
Mohan, add Olson Sturz, Bill. Forty-seven thousand. Mohan, will you add Olson Sturz on there? Add that on there.
But that's the original amount, with all those five things I had on there.
Right.
Okay.
Got a motion in the second?
Did I get the amount?
I have a motion, I'm sorry.
Did we get the amount? I need to have the amount stated for the record, please, with Olson Sturz deducted, along with the other four items. That was the amount before Olson Sturz was removed, is that correct? Now we need, there's, there's one more check to remove. That is Olson Sturz. That includes Olson Sturz. Okay, so earlier when I asked you that two hundred ninety-seven thousand, only two, four items, you might have heard me. That two hundred ninety-seven thousand included Olson Sturz?
It's deducted.
It's deducted. And five items have been deducted at a total of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars even. That's five items.
That's what we approved in tonight. Got a motion, second? Any other comments?
Uh, how much do we have in front? Zero funds?
We have, uh, corporate, we have three hundred thousand. Uh, we have, uh, nine hundred and forty-sixty-one thousand, eighty-eight point nine two.
Mohan, I'm sorry. One of the three hundred thousand is converted. Uh, three hundred thousand is converted?
Three hundred thousand even, and first, uh, in the first place.
As a gentleman. And the second one is how much?
Four hundred and sixty-one thousand, six eighty-eight point nine.
And it's the one again?
That's the nine hundred and forty.
Got a motion in the second, any other? And clerk wrote?
Benson, Myers, I'm sorry, Burgess.
Yeah.
Chavez. Higgs.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Got a motion here. We most now to approve the, uh, executive execution of letters to support the, uh, some of, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of confused because as I drive by and I see the billboard, I see the, the gospel vest is already posted as if we were having it. And yet it has not been approved. So how should that be? Now, I, I have no problem, listen, anything that brings some people to Jesus, I have no problem with that. But if you want to do that.
But if you want to do better than Christ, it has to be approved. And that was already on the billboard out there, on the marquee, as the date being set was, and it being, is going on. How could that be? You approve to put that up there?
The gospel vest is a, uh, a vest that has held, uh, most churches in the area. All the villages are in approval, and that, that they can use that there.
I, I understand it, Mr. Mayor, I'm saying it's, it's been up there for over two weeks now. If we are just approving it now, how is it then listed to be up there? How could we put that up there, if we're going to even approve it?
This, this was only a gender conservative to approve the letter, and, uh, we're not having a meeting, uh, uh, the last, last Tuesday. And we didn't have a-
I have no problem with that, Mr. Mayor, but it was listed before it was approved.
Mr. Mayor, it's the same person that approved, that is the same one that approved for that check to be written.
Okay, so we moved before it's given.
And need a motion, we got a, got a motion?
Motion second.
Got a second. Any other comments?
Benson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yeah.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
In motion after recessed, the executive session will possibly action to be taken discussing the personnel matter, uh, update penalty litigation, collective bargaining, and state the longer conversation if needed. Motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Don't you need a roll call, man? Yeah, we need a roll call. Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Um, well, you know, I have something to talk about. So, you know, it's always about four, five hours.
I hope I'm not in there.
Yeah, you were.
Motion is second, Bushford, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Here.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, uh, need a motion to appoint a temporary chair?
I made a motion that we appoint trustee Hanks as temporary chair.
Right. Motion is second on floor, discussion. Hearing none, uh, Bushford, please, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, number nine, possible action to be taken. Trustee Winslow.
I made a motion that until the return of the village manager and the village clerk be responsible for all agendas, creating them and posting them.
The motion on floors are second. The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, Bushford, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, I have for you tonight a motion to direct all department heads to update the following trustees on a weekly basis. Police Department, trustee Williams. Fire Department, trustee Burgess. Asda and Co., trustee Myers. Finance Administration, trustee Burgess and Hanks. And Public Works, trustee Hanks. Right motion to approve. So, the motion is second, any discussion?
Uh, just a question, the village attorney will address to send out a memo to that back to all the department.
Correct. All right, uh, hearing none, Bushford, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
I'd like to ask for a motion to direct the finance director and treasurer to go through the village board for all payments, invoices, and warrants referred prior to pain.
I make a motion that the finance director and treasurer go through the board for all annual payments.
We got a motion, there's a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Bushford, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks, I'm sorry. Chavez, Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, I'm asking for a motion tonight to direct the village attorney Olson and Sturz to be the lead contact for the lake issue, water issues, and all litigation. Right motion?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, Bushford, please follow.
Benson. Burgess.
Yes.
Chavez. Hanks.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, just for a point of clarification, uh, trustee, uh, Winslow, as already stated, but we're asking the village attorney to, uh, to contact all department heads and agencies to let them know the decisions everybody has for tonight. Uh, so tomorrow, sometime, I'll call and make sure that they're seeing what's in those. All right, um, I'm asking for a motion to the chair.
So one last thing, we can go, uh, just let the audience know. We also, the veteran attorney tonight contacted, right, their office, assuming that, uh, attorney was used to go on.
Another motion to the chair, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all favors?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the motion, sir?
I did.
Thank you.
I'm going to go on one down by myself.
Motion carries the chair. Thank you very much.